So, welcome and good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate with the Republican primary candidates for Lackawanna County Commission. Tonight's debate is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, as well as University of Scranton's Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. Before we begin, I'd like to give you a little information about University's center and the League of Women Voters. So, the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service, or KEEPS, C-E-E-P-S, is a nonpartisan organization at the university that endeavors to promote the common good through programs that support the development of ethical and competent public officials and civically knowledgeable, responsible, and engaged community members. KEEPS provides resources for our students, governing officials, and community members seeking education, training, or opportunities related to public service. The League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County is also a nonpartisan organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation by citizens in their government. As I said, Electric City TV is taping tonight's debate. It's not a live debate. The debate will be aired on Comcast 19, the local TV station for ECTV, so please check the ECTV schedule if you're looking to do it again. And the taped debate will also be available on YouTube. A few procedural items. So again, please turn off any phones or other devices. We also ask that you refrain from expression of support, opposition, approval, or disapproval throughout the event. Hold your applause until the end after each candidate has given their closing statement. Anyone causing a disturbance will be asked to leave the event. Please be aware that it is our policy that no person, candidate, or political group is allowed to use or edit any media from the League's or the Center's events for campaign purposes. Any use of media requires the express written approval of the League of Women Voters and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. The questions that I will ask this evening were developed by the League of Women Voters members and the director and co-director of the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service at the university. So I will, how we will proceed. I will introduce each candidate with a brief bio. Then I will ask the candidates each questions. They have not been given the questions ahead of time, and all candidates will respond to the same questions. The candidates will have 90 seconds to answer each question unless I specify otherwise, if we're running out of time. Any time not used is gone. They can't accumulate saved time. The timer will hold up a 30-second sign as we are 30 seconds into the 90 seconds, and then a stop sign. When the stop sign is raised, we ask candidates to at least finish their sentence, but then end what their comments are. Each candidate has three one-minute rebuttal opportunities. All they need to do, if they want to have a rebuttal, is to let me, the moderator, know, and we will take care of that. After all the questions are asked, we will then go to closing statements. And I guess I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Jeanne Harris. I am a member of the League of Women Voters. I'm also a member of the university's Political Science Department and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. And I will be the moderator for this debate this evening. We drew lots before we started to see who would get the first question first, and that will be Diana Campbell. And we also drew lots for the closing statement, and Diana won that one too. So, so at this point, what I'd like to do is introduce the candidates, sitting in alphabetical order. So Diana Campbell is a resident of Mayfield. She earned an associate's degree in theology from John Brown University. She has served on the Mayfield Borough Council since 2015 and as council president since 2022. She is a Pennsylvania State Association of Borough Certified Borough Official and has served as a committee woman for Mayfield for the Republican Party. Some of Diana's civic experiences include Mayfield Crime Watch, Mayfield Shade Tree Commission. She has been a member of the Lakeland High School Marching Band Parents Organization since 2020, I'm sorry, since 2013, and president of the organization since 2020. She was also a member of the German Historical Society, served as a homeschooling instructor in personal finances for a number of years, and also served as an adult personal financial coach. Diana's professional positions include piano teacher, small business owner, and recreational therapy aide at Allied Skilled Services. Welcome, Diana. Next, Chris Chirmac is a resident of Dalton, a graduate of Abington Heights High School. He's the former general manager of Chirmac Auto Dealership, and he is currently serving as a Lackawanna County Commissioner, winning the position in 2019. Chris's civic experiences include an instructor for the American Heart Association and Commonwealth Emergency Services. He has been volunteering as a first responder for 40 years. He began serving with Clark Summit Fire Company. He has also served with the Dalton Fire Company and Chinchilla Hose Company. For more than 20 years, he has served with the National Ski Patrol and volunteered with Elk Mountains Medical and Safety Personnel. In addition, for over 20 years, he has worked security at St. Benedict's Church Picnic and provided medical assistance to the Steam Town Marathon. Chris is also a former member of the Clark Summit Planning Commission. Welcome, Chris. Next, Lorraine Cummings is a resident of Old Forge. She attended two years of pre-nursing at Marywood University and graduated from Lackawanna County Vocational Technical School, earning a diploma as a licensed practical nurse. Lorraine is the owner, president, and CEO of Larmer Home Care, which has been in operation since 1999. Lorraine served as a Lackawanna County Commissioner from 2015 through 2019, and she was the first female county commissioner ever elected in Lackawanna County. During her time as county commissioner, she served on the Conservation District Board. Lorraine has been an active community leader in the Republican Party, including since 2014. She has been elected three times to serve as the GOP State Committee Woman of Lackawanna County. She is also in her third term as a committee woman for the Old Forge GOP Committee. From 2014 to 2020, she served as chairwoman for the Pennsylvania Federation of Republican And from 2014 to 22, she served as GOP Chairwoman for the 114th District. She also served as president of the Marjorie Scranton Club for Republican Women from 2013 to 2017. In 2009, Lorraine founded the Scranton Tea Party and has served as organizer for the Tea Party of Scranton since then. Welcome, Lorraine. And the fourth candidate is Brian Reeve, a resident of Scranton. He earned a bachelor's degree in public administration and economic development from Penn State. He was employed with United Gilsonite Laboratories, I may have mispronounced that, in Dunmore, from 1981 to 2022, advancing to the position of Vice President of Procurement. Brian served as a member of the Scranton Planning Commission, 1994 to 97, and as Scranton City Councilman, 1998 to 2002. His civic experiences include former president of the East Mountain Residents Association, former board member for Goodwill Industries of Northeast Pennsylvania, and former board member of United Neighborhood Centers of Northeast Pennsylvania. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
I just want to read a clip from the Lackawanna County website that indicates what the job of commissioners for Lackawanna County includes. The commissioners are responsible for implementing operational policies and administering programs that deal with human services, public safety, economic development, and recreational and quality-of-life amenities in an efficient and cost-effective manner for the residents of Lackawanna County. Commissioners are also involved in establishing salary and personnel policies, hiring director-level positions, appointing residents to boards and authorities, and serving on the board of elections. Commissioners levy taxes when necessary to fund vital community programs while also monitoring the size and cost of government and making decisions for reorganizing, consolidating, or eliminating various departments or services. The commissioners must also approve all contracts and ordinances for the purchase of goods, real estate, and audits. One last paragraph. In the community, the commissioners are actively involved with the public and private sector officials on development projects that will enhance our operating environment, improve our business climate, and create employment opportunities. They also work closely with elected officials from the county's municipalities on various events and activities. Long job description. And so we will ask questions so you will know their qualifications and thoughts on those job responsibilities. So if the candidates are ready, we'll get started. The first question goes to Diana. So the question is, it's a basic introductory question. So what do you consider to be the greatest challenge facing Lackawanna County, and how do you plan to address that challenge in your work as commissioner?
I'm Council in Mayfield. Always the greatest challenge is figuring out how to pay for all of the things that there are to do. I think as, when Chris and I are elected majority, we'll work hard together to watch the spending and control that and encourage economic development so that we can do the best for all of the citizens of Lackawanna County.
Thank you, Diana. Same question to you, Chris. What do you consider to be the greatest challenge facing Lackawanna County, and how do you plan to address this challenge in your work as commissioner?
Well, as I found out in the last four years, there's a lot of challenges. Being hit with a worldwide pandemic was certainly one of the major challenges I've ever had to address in my life. But we did it. And I know, working along with Diana, you know, any challenge like that that's going to come up, we'll be able to handle it. The budget is a big challenge. Control spending, that's a, that's a big issue. But the main thing that, you know, that we need to do as commissioners, or what we do, what the county does, is, you know, human services, health and human services of the residents of Lackawanna County. That's, that's, really, to me, that's the main thing that we need to focus on are the residents. There's, there's a lot to it, as I, like I said, as I found out over the years, so.
Thank you. Lorraine, the same question to you. What do you consider to be the greatest challenge facing Lackawanna County, and how do you plan to address this challenge in your work as a commissioner?
Well, as a former commissioner, the greatest challenge is always keeping the budget in tow and making sure that you're always trying to cut where you can and maintain the services that we offer. And that seems to be the biggest thing with especially salaries and unionization of all the different departments. But it can be done, and I have done it, and without raising taxes, and that's what I would continue to do if reelected.
Thank you. Brian, the same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I know the question. In my quest to become a commissioner of Lackawanna County, I've traveled many parts of this county and some very beautiful, beautiful areas I would never have seen if it wasn't for my opportunity to try to become a commissioner. Spoke to a lot of people, knocked on about 900 doors so far, and the number one issue is finance. Number one issue is money, money, and money. Let's start with taxation. Already, they're overtaxed. The people of Lackawanna County were, taxing have been for quite some time. So taxation is always in their mind. Number two, reassessment. What's it going to cost them? There's nobody that's judging this that thinks their taxes are going to go down, even though I've heard the theory that a third goes down, a third stays the same, a third goes up. People don't want to hear that. People want to know what is it going to cost them from their kitchen table. Everybody works from their kitchen table when it comes to economics, right? That's where they pay their bills. That's where they discuss their family problems, right? And right now, at the kitchen table of just about every household in Lackawanna County is the issue of where are we going to find the money to continue to live here? And how much more is it going to cost us to live in Lackawanna County based on this reassessment?
Thank you. So the second question will start with Chris, and we're going to talk a little bit about election administration. Current state law leaves it up to county government officials to determine if voters are allowed to fix or cure an unsigned or undated mail-in ballot. The State House Government Committee is considering legislation that would require all counties to allow voters to cure such problems with their mail-in ballots. So the question is, do you support state legislation that establishes a statewide rule that allows ballot curing? And please explain your answer.
Well, mail-in ballots have certainly been an issue. You know, here in Lackawanna County, we have drop boxes, which I'm not a huge fan of, but we have them. We work very hard in the election department to make sure that everything is safe and secure between our machines, the way things are handled. The folks that work in that department do a terrific job. As far as legislation, you know, we have to follow the rules that are given to us. Whatever they tell us is law, we have to follow the law. Like I said, back to mail-in seem to be the issue, and mail-in ballots. We ran multiple flawless elections here at Lackawanna County. We saw what happened down in Luzerne County. It was, it was an awful mess. We didn't have that problem. We're done counting ballots and tallying votes. Early, probably one of the earliest counties in the entire state. So, you know, I hand it to the people that work there. We all pulled together, people from different departments all come together and make that a seamless, flawless event for that day. So, you know, but follow the law.
Thank you, Chris. Lorraine, the same question. So current law leaves it up to county government officials to determine if voters will be allowed to fix an unsigned or undated ballot. The state government is considering legislation that would require all counties to allow voters to cure such problems with their mail-in ballots. Do you support such state legislation to establish statewide rules? And please explain your answer.
Absolutely not, and I don't support the mail-in ballot initiative either. I think that was the worst thing that could have happened, and had I been in office, I would have been trying to stop that. I did fight that at CCAP a few times with the mail-in ballots. When I went out there, I had tried to fight it coming to an issue to out in public, but then once I wasn't reelected anymore, I wasn't out there, and they passed it. So as far as current, what we have now, it is what it is. But I did get the opportunity to make sure that we kept our mail-in ballots, and Marion Medals was very good at working with me on that, and they have a great office. I think there are areas for improvement. I did see some things I would change. I don't want to really get into that right this second because it's too in-depth, but I think as a commissioner, we can change a couple of things, and the drop boxes are definitely one of them needs to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, the same question. So do you support state legislation that establishes a statewide rule that allows ballot curing? And please explain your answer.
My understanding of the mail-in ballot was only because of the pandemic and COVID that occurred. Now it's here forever. And as a Republican living here in Lackawanna County, I don't know how as Republicans we're going to get elected, because certainly we were not part of this. Republicans still go into the ballot box and they vote. They do vote by absentee when they're sick or out of town, I understand that. But mail-in balloting is not good as far as being a Republican, especially a Republican in Lackawanna County. Right now, to this election primary alone, 15,000 Democrats have asked for mail-in ballots and less than 2,000 Republicans have asked. So where are we ever going to be able to get back a competitive edge? It was only supposed to be, in my mind, a temporary situation to how we voted. I voted for years by absentee when I was in business because I was traveling, so I always voted basically from my desk at my office. Not a problem, my vote went in. And I know being around campaigns, the first thing that went in the machine every night was the absentees that were coming out of that district. They went in first. So I knew the absentees were going in that machine before the votes coming off the machine retaliated. But I'm not in favor, I never was in favor of the mail-in ballot. I think it was only supposed to be a temporary process to voting, but right now, it's not good for Republicans, I can tell you that.
Thank you, Brian. Diana, the same question to you. So do you support state legislation that establishes a statewide rule that allows ballot curing? And please explain your answer.
I always think local rules are better, so I think if the county has the power right now, that power should stay with the county rather than being with the state. As far as mail-ins go, I know other states have mail-ins, and they don't seem to have as much trouble as Pennsylvanians. I have family that live in other states, and they've been voting by mail well before COVID, and it was never even linked at. So, you know, I think as long as we can keep it secure, once it gets into our voter registration office, I think it's an okay situation. Drop boxes, I know Mayfield Borough was approached to place a drop box at the Borough Building, and I definitely voted no on that. I think that allows for unsecure elections, so I think that we don't need drop boxes. Mail-ins seem to be working in other states, so.
Thank you. The next question will start with Lorraine, and we're going to talk a little bit about budgeting, so raising revenue and spending it. So Lorraine, Lackawanna County is expected to receive $9.7 million over 18 years from a historic legal settlement that resolved claims against opioid companies. Thanks to me. Last month, Lackawanna County Commissioners approved an ordinance establishing an opioid settlement fund committee. The three county commissioners, or their designates, will serve with eight other committee members whom the county commissioners will appoint. The settlement documents state that the settlement money is intended for opioid remediation. So the question is, will you please share some of your ideas for how Lackawanna County should spend its opioid settlement funds?
Well, Lackawanna County has spent millions in regards to the opioid epidemic, and that was one of the things that I first did when I came into office prior to not being commissioner, and it was to create an opioid task force. We spent so much money on sending people into rehabs that that money should be utilized to bring it back. That was part of the reason our budgets were getting hammered. So we should be able to get that back into our general fund, some of that money. And I'd be interested to see what kind of, I didn't see the write-up on it, so I'd be interested to read that, to see what kind of rules they're dictating that we have to follow, because that was specifically done to reimburse us for all the costs that it was associated with from the start, which is for a long time. I believe we went back to 2012 with some of the costs that we were associated with that. And drug and alcohol has a long list of expenditures that went there, including rehab facilities. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's so devastating to family members that it goes right into the children and the grandparents, and I think that, you know, some of these things were necessary, and we should be reimbursed for that, and that's where I would be looking first.
Thank you. Brian, the same question to you. So will you share some of your ideas for how the county should spend its opioid settlement funds?
Well, might as well state it right up front. I'm against establishing a health department under the guidance of the county. So if we're going to take money, it's not going to go into the healthcare, because I don't believe that the county should be in the healthcare business. Now, what we do with the funds, I would probably move those funds back into the general fund and moving them some areas I think would be constructive. And I will tell you this, opioids is going to be the root of all evil to this country unless we get really around that issue, because it's such an abuse, and the abuse leads to an addiction, and from the addiction leads to death. But as far as the money that's going to come out of that fund out of Harrisburg, is that where it's coming from?
It's a lawsuit at the federal level.
I would say right now, the only place I would put it is against the general fund until I can figure out, but I'm not getting in the healthcare business if I'm a county commissioner.
Thank you, Brian. Diana, the same question to you. So share some ideas of how you believe Lackawanna County should spend its $9.7 million over 18 years for opioid settlement remediation.
I believe you said that it is, needs to be directed towards opioid problems. So I think we know that there's those issues all over the place, all over the country. So in our county, it would be great to be able to support people that are really looking for help, I think, putting money towards rehab and towards really just helping people to get back on track, whether that's integrating them back into society after they've been rehabbed or helping them through the process. That, I think, is really important, a great way to help people.
Thank you. And Chris, the same question to you. So please share some ideas you have for how Lackawanna County should spend its opioid settlement funds.
So the opioid settlement is, you know, that's a huge win for a lot of, for everyone, really. You know, as a first responder, I dealt with this stuff. Opioids, fentanyl, it's totally, totally out of control. When I have to go over, when I get a phone call and I have to go over to the coroner's office because he has not enough help to move all the bodies that won't fit in the cooler, I mean, it is out of control. The main, these, there's a lot of regulations that come with this settlement. You can only use it for designated things that, it's specific to what we can use it for. I know our attorneys have been, you know, hammering this out for months and months and months. But as far as I'm concerned, number one is education. We have to get into the schools with the kids and educate them on the dangers of opioids and just, I mean, I don't even, I can't even imagine what the next few years are going to be like, especially for kids. And I don't know, it's heartbreaking. But as far as the uses, education, number one, therapies. We have a lot of good folks around here, the Scranton Counseling Center and different centers like that, that deal with, with rehabs and just all kinds of drug and addiction issues. But, you know, I can't speak to every specific thing that's on that list, but really, I mean, my thing is going to be education, number one.
Thank you. The next question will start with Brian. In 2021, Lackawanna County Commissioners approved an ordinance that added a $5 assessment to the annual state fees for vehicles registered in the county. State law allowing for this $5 county assessment requires that the revenue raised by the fee be used to defray the cost of maintaining, repairing, and replacing county-owned roads and bridges. The State Department of Transportation matches the first $2 million that the fee generates for a county. So the question is, do you support or oppose this ordinance? And again, please explain your answer, your support or opposition.
Again, here it is, the government in the people's pocket once again. Right now, maybe only a $5 fee, again, but people are sick and tired of government reaching in and taking that money off that precious kitchen table of theirs. So you know what? I'd have to look at what we have in our allocation for bridges and roads right now out of the general budget. I'd have to see if there's some other ways we can move money into that area, but I will do everything possible not to reach into the pockets of the people of Lackawanna County, because I'm telling you, they're tired, they're worn out, they're frustrated, and they don't trust anyone up here, right? They don't trust anybody that's an elected official. They don't, because they think we're all liars, they think we're not telling them the truth, they think we have solutions to all their problems. But the bottom line is back what I stated in the very beginning of this meeting. It's all about money, and people are tired of this government reaching into their pocket.
Thank you, Brian. Diana, the same question to you. So the $5 assessment fee that is already put in place through a county ordinance and this Department of Transportation matches the first $2 million. Do you support or oppose this ordinance, and please explain your support or opposition?
Well, as an elected official, I represent the people, and the people I've talked to do not like this plan, so I think I would have to say I do not support it.
Thank you. Chris, the same question to you. Do you support or oppose the ordinance for the $5 fee that was added to vehicle registration and targeted earmarked for road warp and bridges?
I can tell you right now, I voted no for it. So I was not for it. You know, I heard it's only $5. Oh, yeah, it's only $5. I have a car, my wife has a car, my son has a car, my other son has a car, and my daughter has a car. Now that's not just $5 anymore. We have 150 bridges here in Lackawanna County, 30 miles of road. $2 million, $3 million, that's, that's one and a half bridge repairs, like, so it's, to me, it was just another tax put on by the state, and I did not agree with it, I don't agree with it. I don't like it.
Thanks. Lorraine, the same question to you. So do you support or oppose this $5 fee added to vehicle registration and earmarked to pay for roads and bridge repair?
This died for lack of second when I was commissioner, so I oppose it. And I lobbied my fellow commissioners to not bring it up, and at the time, I was able to get Gianna Tirianni to come to my side and vote no, well, not to give a second as well. So Commissioner O'Malley didn't get the second. I don't know how he changed his mind, but I'm disappointed that Mr. Tirianni implemented that, and, you know, we can cancel that, so hopefully I will be in the majority and be able to get that done when in office.
Thank you. The next question will start with Diana, and this is still dealing with budget issues. So salary increases included in the new four-year contracts covering 2023 to 2026, agreed to by the county government and three unions, the Deputy Sheriff's Union, Public Defenders, and the Office of Youth and Family Services Staff, will increase budget expenditures by more than $1.95 million by 2026. The contracts include annual salary increases ranging from 1% to 4.5% for full-time employees and for the first time longevity pay for full-time employees. The unionized employees in these three unions will be required to pay more for health insurance, including prescription copays. So the question is, in your opinion, are these contracts for these three unions fair for all sides, and the sides being the unionized employees, the people served by these public servants, and the county taxpayers? So are these union contracts fair? Diana, you get to answer first.
As an elected official in Mayfield Borough, I know we have to sit down and do the contract thing with our employees, and it's, it can be challenging to, you want to serve your employees properly, you want to make sure they get the raises that they deserve, they're working hard, they, they earn their, they earn their raises, and of course, the work that they do for the people, you have to take all of that into consideration. And of course, the work that they do for the people, you have to take all of that into consideration. I didn't get a chance to look at all of these contracts that the union workers in the county agreed to. But I'm certain that there was professional people working on them and tried to make it as fair as possible for all sides.
Thank you. Chris, the same question. So in regard to these contracts, do you believe they're fair for all sides, the unionized employees, the people served by these public servants, and the county taxpayers?
Let me start by saying, first of all, we have great employees that work for Lackawanna County. Many of them are, most of them are underpaid in the grand scheme of things or what people get paid in the, we'll call it the real world. We have seven unions we deal with in the county. It's a difficult thing because you're dealing with taxpayer money. But on the other hand, you need good people. So it's a catch-22. My thing is, do I think it's fair? I think it was, I think it was fair. They did some, they gave a little here, we gave a little. But everybody's entitled to increases. Things are out of control. Costs are out of control, fuel prices, food prices. So everybody deserves a raise in pay, everybody, including county employees. You know, I delivered this year, it was the first year in over a decade, I, because of me, we delivered a balanced budget. I was handed a preliminary budget over $8 million deficit. The, my team and I, we have a bipartisan budget study committee. We looked that budget over line by line, $150 million budget. We made corrections and just made adjustments without affecting anybody's operating funds in any department. We were able to deliver the balanced budget. There's still room. I identified over $5 million of room. So we have to keep focused on trying to save money wherever we can, but we got to take care of our employees.
Thank you, Chris. Lorene, the same question. So in your opinion, are these contracts fair for all sides, meaning the employees, the people served by the public servants, and the county taxpayers?
They're certainly not fair to the taxpayers, ever. You know, I have made sure that the taxpayers were able to see all those contracts online, hoping that that would shame some people into creating a better budget through the unionization process. Some of the things that I had to deal with with them is, you know, overtime that was being utilized for full-time employees rather than utilizing part-time employees. I have to applaud Joanne Granahan because she finally got my issues passed this past year. I'm so proud of her for that. She's proven to be a very good negotiator with the unions. And I'm happy that she is still there and doing the job that we had hired her and for. And she's gradually increased to a different position and doing a great job. But no, it's not fair to the taxpayers. However, there are some in the county that are very underpaid. And I think that they could use a higher rate of pay. But like I said, we don't have the option when unions are involved to do that, can't step in and give them pay raises. One thing we can do is in our administrative offices, which I did do, is change our salary rates so that when somebody new starts, that they would go back to the starting rate. Because when I first came in, they were just getting paid with whatever the person that left was getting. So at the administrative area, we can do that. But with the unions, we can't. So I am happy for Joanne Granahan for the work that she did, though.
Thank you, Lorene. Brian, the same question to you. So in your opinion, are these contracts fair to the unionized employees, the people served by these public servants, and the county taxpayers?
With not being involved in the negotiation of this contract or any contract, it's hard for me to say. I will tell you this, that if I'm fortunate enough to win a commissioner's seat, I'm going to open up and not open up, I'm going to review all contracts that are in place once I get into office. Now, Sam, I'm looking at opening up contracts, I'm saying I'm going to review contracts and look at how they were structured and so forth. When I was in City Hall, I had four unions I used to have to interact with and work with and negotiate. The county has seven unions, so obviously there's more unionized employees. Put it into perspective, I was raised in a household, my father was a Teamster truck driver. So back to the kitchen table, the check that was on that kitchen table was from a Teamster. So to me, if you're a union worker or a non-union worker, if you're a good worker, that's all that counts. That's all that counts. But everybody needs to be fair here. The employees need to be treated fairly and the taxpayers need to be treated fairly. I I don't know how much room we have to work with. I don't even know what kind of numbers I'm looking at. I don't even have a good audit to look at. The next audit is out in 2023. I don't know what our liabilities and assets look like. So many questions that I, I'm not prepared to answer. I don't know the real business of this county because I haven't been able to get real solid information out of it. But as far as the employees go, I will make a statement. I met somebody on the campaign trail that works for the county. Not going to get into great detail, but an employee of this county for seven years. I asked him, I said, if I become a commissioner, how can I help you? And they said, well, I don't know about that right now, but you are the first person that asked me about my job and what I need to do a better job. So I think there's kind of a disconnect here between the management of this county and our employees.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to talk a little bit more specifically about ethics. And we're going to start with Chris on this question. So approving contracts for the purchase of goods, real estate, and audits is an important job of the Board of Commissioners. How would you ensure that the consideration and approval of contracts is done ethically?
I was born and raised in my my family business where I was taught ethical business practices. I'm, you know, I I don't even know, I I can't even stress how how much that means to me. We're open, we're transparent. Everybody knows if there's a question, you call me, ask me, we try to work it out. But as far as, we just try to be as open and transparent as we can for anything that we do, whether it's contracts, purchase, whatever. I I don't know what else to say on that, but it it means ethics are very, very important to me.
Thanks, Chris. Lorene, the same question. How would you ensure that the consideration and approval of contracts is done ethically?
We have an ethics policy at the county that we all should follow, and I believe we do. While I was there, we implemented another program for contracts where all departments have to bring their, any any items that they want to bring into the commissioners for contracts have to come before the commissioners in a public meeting, and they have to be approved there. All of the department heads do that, I believe, still. I don't think that that ever changed. One great example is Maureen McGuigan, who has the Arts and Culture Department. And she has multiple, multiple programs that she has and has to do contracts out. And she brings them to the commissioners' meeting for approval every single time. And sometimes there's 30 or 40 of them that we have to read through in our work session to do that, and that's done consistently. So it's a very open process and I was happy to be a part of implementing it.
Thanks, Maureen. Brian, to you. How would you ensure the consideration and approval of contracts by the county is done ethically?
Well, it all begins with the negotiator. Who's the lead person in the contract we're negotiating? I negotiated for 44 years with a private company, from everything from heating oil to commodity chemicals from Africa across the world, okay? I always took the lead on those negotiations because that was my job. Again, as far as the county structure goes, I have to get further into who is the lead person in negotiations because it all starts there. Then also is your legal team as well as your negotiator. Most likely, your legal people are your negotiators. I can't answer the question on ethics when it comes to the county. I didn't know that we had an ethics board or commission established. That's good to hear. But contracts are sticky. Contracts have to always be negotiated in good faith. But contracts also have to have an escape clause that if it's not, if both parties aren't living up to their end of the negotiation, there has to be an exit out. That's what I always looked for in the contracts I negotiated.
Thank you. Diana, the same question to you. How would you ensure that the consideration and approval of contracts is done ethically?
So doing something ethically is just doing the right thing, even when no one's looking. So you need to make sure that everybody holds up their end of the deal and that it's done openly and clearly with all of that. Just want to address one other thing. I've met a lot of county employees along the campaign trail and I can't hear enough good about how much Commissioner Schirmack does to help them out. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Lorene, and this deals with property reassessment. There is still a long way to go before all the properties in the county will be reassessed. Of course, once the reassessments are completed, there will still be much work to do before the new assessments are put in place. So what actions do you believe the county commissioners must take to ensure that the new assessments are put to use in a fair, efficient, and effective manner?
There is no process for a fair and effective manner for a reassessment or assessment. The county commissioners can't get involved in that practice. That has to be hired out and Tyler Technologies got the contract and the commissioners can't interfere with that. So I don't know what fair process they're talking about when they say that they're going to make it fair. Because you can't give one person a deal and not another. That's making it unfair and inequitable. So there is no fair process for a commissioner to get involved. They can't. It's illegal. I I don't know what this fair process is that they're talking about. As far as what I would do, I absolutely would suspend the reassessment if elected, and that's the bottom line. As a commissioner, I made sure that we did not do a reassessment and I don't want to hear about a judge or this or that. If the judges said we had to do it, I was prepared and so was my fellow commissioner, Mr. O'Malley, prepared to go all the way to the Supreme Court if we had to to stop it because it is not something that's mandated by the state or anybody for us to do that. And it's not fair to have county residents be stuck with this bill. And I get very upset with it because it's not fair to the taxpayers and not one person should ever, ever lose their house because of a reassessment or a tax. It's very infuriating to me. Sorry. I get very upset over that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorene. Brian, the same question to you. What actions do you believe the county commissioners must take to ensure that the new assessments are put to use in a fair, efficient, and effective manner?
My position isn't quite as far as Lorene's as far as suspending it. I was going to say I'd like to reassess the reassessment upon my arrival to the county building. 67 years is a long time to go without a reassessment. I understand that. Happens to be the same year I was born, 67 years ago, a long time ago. Not that long, not that long. Anyway, I have a couple of problems with it. The problems I have are, where are the protections for the seniors, you know? Is there enough protection put in that the seniors won't be put out of their homes? And what safety net we can put in place? That's number one. So my biggest problem, my biggest problem is if we're going to reset the clock on every property, commercial, residential, industrial, Lackawanna County, we're going to reset the time, all right, moving forward because maybe it's not going to happen again for maybe another 67 years, who knows? I can't see how, if everybody has a new starting point with their property value and assessment value, how we are going to still be able to go through an appeal process where we have nine people appointed by politicians to do the reassessment. Me, in my eyes, if we're going to completely professionalize reassessment in Lackawanna County, there has to be a professional board at the end consisting of a professional banker, professional real estate lawyer, and a professional, what else do I need? I need a banker. Did I say a banker? I need a banker, I need a real estate agent, and who else do I need? What else do I need? Cooperation. But that's what I'm looking at. See, I need, I can't see this. I want to answer that. I can't see this, that if we're going to have brand-new value established for everybody's property and then if they're going to appeal it and then it gets back to, well, wait a minute, he's a friend and so is El. Guess what? We just defeated the whole reassessment.
And at the end, we'll give you a chance for rebuttal, Lorene. So Diana, the same question to you. What actions do you believe the county commissioners must take to ensure that the new assessments are put in to use in a fair, efficient, and effective manner?
Well, we all know reassessment, it has to happen. It hasn't happened in a very long time. And in Mayfield Borough, we have homes selling for close to $200,000 and the municipality collects less than $200 in taxes annually. House after house, we're seeing that come through. And we, how can you run a municipality like that? We know it, it has to, it has to happen eventually. It needs to be done fairly. As elected officials, we can oversee what what's happening. We need to make sure that it's done fairly. We need to have a plan for our senior citizens and those other people on fixed income so they don't end up out in the street. I don't believe that there has been a plan put in place. We need to explore into that and put a good plan in place. And we don't want to wait for another 50-plus years to have this done again. It needs to be, there needs to be a plan moving forward.
Thank you. Chris, the same question to you. So what actions do you think the county commissioners must take to ensure the new assessments are put into use in a fair, efficient, and effective manner?
Fairness is key. That's that's the big thing. Reassessment came along, I voted no for it, and I'll tell you why. It's been a long time and it's overdue, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. It was poor, in my mind, it was poor timing. Secondly, we don't have plans in place. What are our plans in place for seniors and people on fixed income? We had no plan in place. And the third issue that I had is where we, where we go from here? Is it going to be another 50-some years? Or is it going to be five, 10, whatever? No plan. I said, well, if there's no plans in place, I can't do that. You know, I've I've gone, I've been up in Archibald talking, there was a particular woman. I lived in my house for 60-plus years. My husband passed away. I I survive on $11,000 a year. That's how much she gets. She's going to lose her house potentially. Those are the fears that are out there. That can't happen. I've been working with other counties to see how they deal with their issues and how they help the the people on fixed incomes and elderly that are, that could potentially lose their homes. We we got to work with that. I'm also working on, I want to start lobbying Harrisburg to eliminate property taxes. I think that we need to do that. Other states do it, we should be able to do it as well.
Thank you. And so Lorene, you have a one-minute opportunity for rebuttal?
I'm going to take two because I want one for him and one for Diana, if that's possible. And then I'll be done. I won't have any rebuttals. For Brian, just so you're aware, there is a process and Tyler Technologies will have to hire people to do those assessors separate from the county assessor's office. And that's going to cost the, those people that are asking for that that assessment to be done again, it's going to cost them to pay for the real estate agent and the attorney to go in and fight that assessment and get it redone. So that's not fair to them either. There's another pocket of money that they're going to have to pay for. Diana, you have the ability, as a councilperson, to go in and reassess people right now. You and the school board have that ability. That is why, that's why I say the county should not be held accountable because the local municipalities didn't do their job in keeping up with their assessments. And you're, you have the ability to come to any assessment hearing at the county and change them. And and that's, you should have a lawyer coming. I've gone across this county and told municipalities this, they didn't listen. Scranton did. They did the job that they should do. Thank you.
Thank you. And you actually still have one rebuttal left because everybody has.
Oh, because, could he?
Thanks.
I'm very passionate.
So the next question, we're going to start with Brian. And the question is, and here we're dealing with economic development. So commissioners are expected to be involved with the public and private sector officials on development projects that will enhance and improve the county's business climate and create employment opportunities. So what are some of your plans or ideas for improving the county's business climate and creating employment opportunities? Hopefully that provide living wages for county residents?
Well, let me begin by saying this. As far as, I hear so many politicians and candidates talk about job creation, that we're going to bring jobs back to northeastern Pennsylvania and all these grand ideas of what we're going to do from an economic standpoint. Well, I can tell you, over the last 30 years, the only jobs that I really have seen come in are service-based jobs and hospital jobs, universities. Government's a very large employer, all the way from the state down to your local school districts. But when it comes to process manufacturing, I I don't see where that's going to be the future of Lackawanna County. I see Lackawanna County being strictly distribution and transportation going forward. Now, there's not going to be a lot of family sustaining income coming out of those positions because they're basically consist of a lot of material handlers, truck drivers, forklift drivers, those kind of people. But that's what I envision happening to Lackawanna County. I don't see us building, bringing plants in here. They're going to build cars or refrigerators, right, such kind of goods. So I think the best way we can do it is by communicating. I think the county government needs to communicate with the city government, the city government needs to communicate with the chamber. And I think dialogue, and dialogue with also our state representatives in Harrisburg. But I just don't see where we're going in terms of developing process manufacturing jobs here because I've I've been hearing that they were coming for 30, 35 years and they're still not here. And I really don't see them coming. But I do see distribution being big, very big.
Thank you, Brian. Diana, the question to you. So what are your plans for improving the county's business climate and creating employment opportunities that provide living wages for county residents?
In Mayfield Borough, we've been working diligently for these last two, three years with developers that are excited to bring their businesses into our area. We put in place some creative incentives for these developers and business, potential businesses that are going to be coming in. The huge logistics centers that are going to be creating, we're told, 900 jobs in Mayfield. Like, that's, that's amazing. And of course, that will pull for all around Lackawanna County and probably surrounding counties as well. So we're very excited about that. That's going to help increase our tax base in Mayfield Borough, Lakeland School District. We're also sharing with Carbondale Township, Archibald, Valley View, and Lackawanna County. So this is exciting and I think it's going to really be beneficial to everyone.
Thank you. Chris, the same question to you. So what are some of your plans? Sorry, I lost my page here.
I got it, I got it, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, which is, I'm glad you asked it because that was one of the things that I, one of the reasons why I decided to run for commissioner. You know, we had a dysfunctional government, things weren't working very smoothly. I started my quest to become a commissioner. One of my very first stops was the president of the Chamber of Commerce in the city, Bob Durkin. My big question to him was, what working relationship do you have with Lackawanna County? None. There was none. First thing I did when I got into as a commissioner is we established a working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. They're the experts right now. We have a small economic development department, they do a great job. We can't do this whole thing on our own. So working with Bob Durkin and his team, we got hit with this pandemic. We had to start with grants and getting money on the streets for these local businesses and for people that were struggling. So thank God we were able to start working together with them. And like Diana said, up in Mayfield with the new buildings that are going there, with the Tech Ridge Center that they have, and they're working with the schools and these technical jobs, you know, we have the corridor, Interstate 81, the turnpike, we're within two hours of major cities. We're in a prime spot. I think we have a long way to go here. We're going to grow this area and we're going to bring some great jobs into northeastern Pennsylvania, especially if the train starts to come. That's going to be another economic driver for Lackawanna County.
Thank you. And Laureen, what are your plans for improving the county's business climate and creating employment opportunities that provide living wages for county residents?
Well, you know, talk about dysfunctional governments, but I mean, we had, we had quite a bit of work that we did consolidating 13 offices and helping the taxpayers out and lowering all their taxes. That was a great job by us and that's what you want to do to create jobs, make sure that their taxes are low, not increase them and reassess them. But one of the plans that we already did, that I already talked with Virginia in Toronto, she has a great office. She does a lot of things with CTC, getting our kids in the workforce trained for the right jobs. We have a workforce here, but we don't have them trained for the jobs that we need them to be working in. And that was some of the things that we were working on at the time, and I'm hoping that that program still continued. I would assume it does. I mean, she did a great job with that. But I am one of those people that had the ability to go to school as a single mom of twins to be an LPN. So I benefited from that program at the county. They do a lot of work and, you know, we do great jobs. The other issue that I talked about was small businesses in the area and making sure that we recognize them because they are the heart, soul, and blood of this county. You could bring companies in here all you want, but the small businesses are the ones that run this area and they pass it down in generation after generation, which we should be very, very, very proud of all the small businesses that we have here and the ingenuity that they gave us with their children continuing that. And I believe Chris is a product of that as well. And I'm hoping that my kids take on my business when I'm no longer here. Thank you.
Thank you, Laureen. And so we are running out of time, so we are going to move to closing statements. I have, there's only more questions, but, and so in the draw before we started, Diana picked first, so we will go down the line with closing statements. You have two minutes for your closing statements. Diana.
First of all, thank you for hosting us tonight and it's been quite a good experience. I get asked all along the way of this campaigning, why are you running for county commissioner? And I have a couple of reasons. I just decided I really love government. I've been in council in Mayfield Borough for eight years and it's been really exciting to see all the things that we can accomplish when we work together. My co-council members just went to a conference in State College related to our levy. We've done a ton of work with our levy. We're a small municipality, we have, we have four full-time employees, that's it. We have one guy that does our, works on our levy. And the amount of work we've been able to accomplish, Mayfield Borough was recognized at this conference with FEMA and DEP and I'm so proud of them. It's been a great thing to work together and see what we can get done for our residents in Mayfield Borough. I'm excited to bring that up to the county. I'm excited to join with Chris. He's a proven leader, he's fiscally responsible, and he's a true public servant. As I mentioned earlier, all along the way, I meet county employees that are, just can't say enough good about the care that Chris shows during his day-to-day. He's keenly aware of what's going on in this county because he spends time with the people. And all of the residents of Lackawanna County should feel very fortunate to have him as our commissioner as well. He listens, he takes the time to know what's going on, what people are concerned about. And when Chris and I are elected majority commissioners in November, we're going to work hard for all of the citizens of Lackawanna County. I humbly ask for your vote on May 16.
Thank you, Diana.
I told her to say all those nice things about me.
Peter.
Chris, you're on.
First, I want to, I want to thank University of Scranton for having us here tonight and the League of Women Voters for their organization and getting this all done, even though I've been, I don't know, been thinking about today for a long time. I will say it's been an honor and a privilege serving as the county commissioner here in Lackawanna County. It's a serious job, you need serious people. I go to work every day. I go in and I see our maintenance guys and our sheriff's department and I travel throughout that building all day long. I go to the 911 Center, which right now is in trouble. We need help. So if there's anybody looking for a great job, we're hiring at the 911 Center. But we have great people there. And to me, it's a privilege, it's just, it's an absolute privilege to be there every day. You know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing this, I'm not running again for a job, I'm running to do the job. Same thing with Diana. I wanted the right person with me to move forward into November and hopefully we have an opportunity to win the majority. We don't have our own agenda. We want to do what's right for Lackawanna County and Lackawanna County's residents. There's a lot of issues coming up, costs are going up, we have to control our spending, that's number, number one on the list. We can do that. We're the team for November. And again, I humbly ask for your vote, support Schirmack and Campbell ticket, and I'm sure that you'll be happy when you do. We're going to do a great job for the county residents.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, thank you for hosting this and thank you for all the candidates for showing up today to debate. And I just want to say the reason that I decided to run again is because they bought a medical building. And I disagree with that wholly. I think we all saw how horribly across this country and locally the COVID was handled and it's something that should be done by the medical community, not by government. That's why it was handled inappropriately. I am a nurse, I know how things should work and how they should be run. I run my own business for almost 30 years now and I've been commissioner, I understand the job, I know what needs to be done, I know where the cuts need to be made. I do applaud Chris on getting the team that he needed together to help him with the budget. I saw the names of people that worked with him and I thank you for working with him to show him where some of the areas are needed to be cut. That was very kind of you to do. And I just want to make sure that I will let you know that I really didn't expect to be up here this time around. Department of Health is something we don't need. I'm upset with that and I didn't like the fact that we took out three loans within a three-week timeframe. TANs are only taken out when you have no money. I don't, I don't know how badly it is at the county right now. I did watch all the budget hearings and looked at all their budgets. We do have a surplus according to our budget, but I want to make sure that I get in there and look at the closer numbers, which need to be done on an annual. You have to do that every single day. That's what you should be working on, every day. Where can we make cuts? Every single day. That's all I did the entire time I was in the county, was meet with the department heads all the time and some of them just could not take the fact that I was in their office all the time harping on where we can get savings. But that was my job. I was the minority commissioner and I did it well. And I know that if I'm elected again, no matter who I'm elected for with up here, we will make sure that we save taxpayers money and keep money in your pocket and out of the government's pocket. Thank you.
Thank you, Laureen.
Thank you and thank you for hosting. And thank you for everyone who came. Show an interest in your community and that's, that's baked. People need to come out and voice their opinion, people need to be involved in the process. Because bad government only exists when good people stay home and do nothing. Okay, here I am, after 22 years of not being an elected official, now here I am trying to come back. Why? I say why not, right? I'm a guy coming in basically from the private sector, coming in with a different set of eyes, a different look at things, a different approach, a businessman's approach, completely, top to bottom. Although I've had public experience being in City Hall and working in public unions, I have all that, maybe not to the extent of what this job calls for, but why? Why am I here? You know why I'm here? Because you know what? I know we can do better. And I know I can improve if elected, not only in my life and myself and my family that still live here, but also you and your families that live out there, all right? We got to get serious about what we're doing in Lackawanna County. There's a lot of waste, there's a lot of mismanagement, a lot of areas. We never even talked about the prison. Does anybody want to talk about the prison? Disaster, right? And I'm only talking as a taxpayer. So, you know, again, why am I doing this? You know, I had a professor in Penn State back, hate to say it, 45 years ago. His name was Abe Snyder.